Good morning and welcome to those present in the council chamber to the meeting of the Health Scrutiny Committee for October. My name is councillor Richard Cleaver and I'm the chairman of this committee. On my right is my vice chairman councillor Chris Reeve and on my left is Democratic Services Officer Jess Wasser-Yates and also present in the chamber is our scrutiny officer, Simon Evans. For those of us in the chamber, if we have a fire alarm, we need to leave the council chamber through the rear doors, move through reception and assemble in the car park at the front and await further instructions. In additioning to welcome all members of the committee to this meeting, I would like to also welcome councillor Steve Clegg, who is the Executive Council for Adult Care and Health, and Maria Hume, Executive Support Councillor for Adult Care and Health. I'd also like to welcome councillor Jeanette McGee, who has been recently appointed as a representative of West Lindsay District Council. Other participants will be introduced when we reach their item or when they first speak. The meeting is being streamed via the county council's website and all your comments will therefore remain accessible online after the meeting. With this in mind, I would like to welcome members of the public and press who are watching. Can I remind everyone to ensure that their mobiles, laptops and iPads are now on silent? So we move on to agenda item one, apologies for absence replacement members, Jess.
Thank you, Chairman. We've received apologies from councillor Cullen, District Councillor Haig and Liz Ball from Health Watch. We also have councillor Corey replacing councillor Kendrick. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll move to item two, declarations of members' interest. Do any members wish to declare an interest? Councillor McGee.
Yeah, currently employed by LPFT, so I just thought they know.
Thank you. Anyone else? I need to declare that I am a partner governor representative of LCC on the Council of Governors of North West Anglia Foundation Trust. If you become aware of any interest at any point during the meeting, you can declare it then. And any interests declared will of course be recorded in the minutes, as I'm sure you are aware. Item three, minutes of the previous meeting of the 10th of September 2025. We need to confirm the minutes of the meeting as a correct record, they are on pages three to 11 of the agenda pack. Thank you councillor Mackinson Saunders, do I have a second please? Councillor Martin, thank you. All those in favour please show. All those against? Any abstentions? Thank you. Those minutes are approved. Item four, chairman's announcements. The next item is the announcements which were circulated with the agenda as pages 13 to 20. Does anyone have a question or comment on the announcements, please? Councillor Mackinson Saunders.
Oh, I've got a number of questions actually. Is there anything else you can update me with about Spilsby GP surgery? There's been a lot of concern in East Lindsay about that closing and I noticed that next month we've got GPs coming back, we just want to make sure that another surgery isn't going to be House of Cards or something. Do you want me to ask them separately and you can answer them?
Yes, please go through them separately. I'm going to ask Simon if we've had any update on Spills because I certainly haven't, but have you anything to add, Simon?
There isn't anything to add, other than I, the, I have been made aware that the Saturday morning flu jab clinic couldn't go ahead, but that is all I know. I think the plan, as is stated in the announcements, is that the ICB, when they report on GP services at the December meeting, can perhaps reflect on some of the lessons that they've learnt from the, if you like, closure of Spilsby surgery. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much indeed.
Your next question?
Yeah, number three. Online GP appointment requests, I had some feedback about those, were causing chaos. There's so many emails to go through, people wake up and think they've got a bad back, so send an email and surgeons are being besieged by it. So I wondered if it was well thought through, it seemed like a good idea, but was it a good idea?
I think this is something we can cover next meeting when we have the GP services and we'll make sure when we're doing the agenda setting that that is, your comments are noted.
Thank you. And the last one was about the merging of the ICBS. I've got a friend who works in another ICB who said that there was going to be a struggle to lop the workforce by 50% because there wasn't enough money in the coffers to pay the redundancies. So is that going to hold this up? And the other question is, what representation has Lincolnshire got on this ICB? Because it really worries me that we're also on a limb in Lincolnshire for most things and as you get further towards the east coast where I live, I'm even more worried about it. So have you got any reassurances, please?
Thank you, we can take that offline and talk to the ICB about that, thank you. Councillor Lee.
Thanks councillor Cleaver. On a similar note, I've previously raised concerns because where I lived, people can't get wound care at their GP surgery and they have to go to a central location. I'm not quite sure where that is, but I think it's the one down there being que, but I'm not sure. I've had a response, it says it's from the PCN manager, there's, I don't like abbreviations and I don't know what that stands for, but basically I'm told that GP contract changes and the ICB funding cuts meant that practices were faced with a decision if they wanted to continue and they'd actually be at a loss if they did that in terms of money. So basically that's why people have got to travel a long way to get their wounds dressed. And I just want to use this committee to ask you to make a note, please, for the record, that I'm very concerned that people where I live have to do this. Whoever's implementing those changes and cuts, I still think it's a bad job when you've got to go a long way to get a wound on your arm or something dressed, it's just not right. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you've touched on something which is a concern to us all. PCN is Primary Care Network, to which all GPs.
It would be nice though if people didn't use abbreviations, thank you.
Yes, it would. So something to which all GPs services in Lincolnshire belong to one of them and I think it's quite a longstanding issue for us in the committee that we don't have as, perhaps have as thorough understanding as the distinctions of responsibilities between the PCN and the individual GP surgeries as perhaps we would like. So I think that's something we can highlight when we have the GP practising here next month. Thank you. And your points are noted councillor Lee, thank you. Anyone else on chairman's announcements? So I take the announcements as noted and we can now move on to item five on the agenda, which is maternity and neonatal services overview. Item five was circulated as part of the agenda pack on pages 21 to 32. An item on maternity and neonatal services was requested by the committee during the summer. The presenters are Terry Vine, Associate Director of Nursing NHS Lincolnshire Integrated Care Board, and Emma Upjohn, Director of Midwifery, United Lincolnshire Teaching Hospitals NHS Trust. Welcome to you both. Would you like to present your report in 10 or so minutes, please? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. Good morning councillors and thank you for inviting us to talk about maternity. So I'm just going to give a little bit of background around the system and the ICB's role. So we have something called the Local Maternity and Neonatal System, which is known as LMNS and that's the same for every system around the country. It was a recommendation of the Better Birth Report in 2016. What it does is it brings together NHS Trust commissioners, public health maternity voice partnerships and other stakeholders and the purpose is to deliver safer, more personable and equitable maternity and neonatal care. And the key functions are around strategic planning, service integration, quality improvement and co-production of services. The core area of focus is around continuity of care and Emma's going to talk a little bit more about that. Safer maternity care, perinatal mental health, maternal medicines network, neonatal critical care and digital transformation and workforce development. In Lincolnshire, we have six board meetings per year which are chaired by Sharon Robson, who's one of our non-executive directors at Lincolnshire Integrated Care Board and our senior responsible officer is Martin Farhey, who is our chief nurse. Organisations represented are the services at United Lincolnshire Teaching Hospitals, which Emma's represents, the Lincolnshire ICB Better Birth Programme Team, which sit under my remit, Perinatal Mental Health Services at the Lincolnshire Partnership Foundation Trust, Children and Young People's Nursing Service in Early Years at Lincolnshire County Council, Maternity and Neonatal Voice Partnership Chair, Public Health Regional Perinatal Team at NHS England and East Midlands Ambulance Service, Health Watch and our East Midlands Neonatal Operational Delivery Network and University of Lincoln. You can see quite a few partners in the room together at the LMNS. Whilst we only have one trust that provide maternity and neonatal care within the LMNS footprint, there is a recognition that some of our Lincolnshire women do birth across the border in other services and thus as an LMNS, we do link in with those local LMNS and trusts in other ICB areas when there are particular concerns that are raised by Lincolnshire women and Lincolnshire families. What we work to is the NHS England Three Year Delivery Plan, which was published in March 23, to set out how maternity and neonatal services will be transformed over the three years life of the plan. The four strategic themes are listening to and working with women and families, workforce growth and support, embedding safety standards and standards and structures for equitable care. You'll be aware that there's been a National Maternity and Neonatal Task Force set up by the, chaired by the Secretary of State for Health and Social Care and this group under the direction of Baroness Amos is going to be reviewing 14 NHS trusts, it was originally announced as 10, which have been identified as needing urgent improvement, consolidate the findings from previous maternity reviews which have had quite a high profile in the media, things such as Ockham and Kirkhope into a single national action plan and deliver a comprehensive improvement strategy by the end of the year. Leggshale LMNS, we are mindful that Queen Elizabeth Hospital, Kings Lynn, which has small amounts of patient flow from the south of Lincolnshire is one of the 14 review trusts and I've been working in contact with the local ICB and the local LMNS to understand the scope and the structure and any early things that come out of that process. Next in the paper, I've presented local data around summary of delivery episodes within our hospitals and you can see there that on the first table that you've got figures for ULTH and then we've split into other providers and you can see that there's, the one thing that jumps out is that we have a declining birth rate, which is in common with the national picture, we're completely in line with the national picture. And then you can also see that as a share of the amount of births within Lincolnshire, ULHT have 72%, which has been a steady increase in share of the births. And then also then presented a map which will show you the flows, the patient flows across the, the delivered care within Lincolnshire and then it'll go across our board and I don't think that will come as any great surprise to councillors. We've also split down the data by deliveries at Lincoln and Boston, so you can see that in terms of percentage, 62.5% of births took place on the Lincoln site and 37.5% of births took place on the Boston site. Understanding experience of users of maternity and neonatal services is fundamental to our programme and I'd like to pay tribute to Beth Cook, who is our maternity and neonatal voice partnership chair, who works hard utilising her independence to gain feedback and patient stories from families. Beth's term of office comes to an end at the end of December 25, it's a two-year term of office and I think we can say she's had a massive impact on the system and on our work. And we are looking at how we replace, there's big shoes to fill in terms of Beth and looking at how we do that in line with the additional ask of the MVP and additional funding that has been provided by NHS England. As well as utilising our MVP, we have an involvement group and I've listed there, I won't go into them, but different ways that we get the feedback from families and that's really important to us to make sure that we do get that feedback about the services and capture those voices. I'd also like to highlight something that Lincolnshire are really proud of is the Military Maternity Project. Originally, it was a two-year pilot scheme which offered bespoke support to Lincolnshire for military families in Lincolnshire that face challenges around healthcare, pregnancy and birth, recognising there are particular challenges for family that are required to move around and transfer of care due to being posted. Following successful evaluation of the pilot, the role has become our business as usual now and it's attracted national attention and has won a National Health Service Journal Award. So we're really proud of that and we feel like that's really made a difference for military families. So now I'm going to hand over to Emma.
Thank you, Terry. Morning Chair. So my role as Director Midwifery is just to ensure the safe services and quality delivery of care across Lincolnshire for the women that choose to birth at our trust. It's fair to say that Lincolnshire maternity services have been on a journey, an improvement journey, and that was led by our previous Director Midwifery Libby Garubi, who actually was recognised by the Chief Midwifery Officer in London and received an award for that. So back in February 2022, the CQC came and inspected both services on both sites and I'm really pleased to say that we were rated as good on both sites. That was following a previous requires improvement status given to us in 2019. So Terry touched a little bit about the maternity heat map. I also think it's fair to say that maternity and neonatal services are experiencing a huge amount of national scrutiny. So on the back of this, the regional teams have put together an analytical tool that measures data and outcomes and therefore then scores you a little bit like a score depending on the outcomes that you receive and what the aim of that regional heat map is so that we can target the support to those maternity sites that's really, really requiring that support and that investment. It's captured on various different data sets and that's CQC data, regulation notices from coroners, any external stakeholder concerns, so that's from our regulatory bodies and anybody that's doing some external investigations on incidents. It looks at activity data, it looks at our workforce and our retention and our vacancies both for midwifery, maternity support workers and our consultant obstetricians. It looks at our stillbirth rates and the maternal mortality rates and it also considers CQC patient experience, which is really, really important. So that data's then collected and scored and I'm really proud to say that Lincolnshire is one of, well, it is the highest scoring trust within the region and I think that demonstrates the commitment and the hard work that certainly we've been on over that last five, six years of that improvement journey. I think we've done that together as a system. I think working with the LMNS and the ICB and our system partners, which include health visiting and our 0219 services and our mental health services, I think coming together as a system, we've been able to deliver some of those changes and ultimately benefit the population of Lincolnshire. So currently we're scoring 16 on the heat map, which again is in what we call rag-rated blue, which is not flagging any concerns and we'll just continue to work on the improvements. So Terry touched a little bit about our neighbouring trusts, so we do have a small amount of Lincolnshire women that deliver at other services and in the papers you will see that we have highlighted some of the external neighbouring trust CQC reports and their gradings. So in maternity at ULTH, we've got three key domains around delivering safety and effectiveness and we look at robust staffing, the governance process around any incidents and when they happen. We're using evidence-based practice to inform our outcomes and it's part of the three-year delivery plan, it's around continuity of carer. So continuity of carer is where they have the same or a nominated team of midwives that look after them during the antenatal, intrapartum and postnatal care. And the evidence is there that if we have continuity of carer teams, we actually get much better outcomes. We also get midwifery satisfaction in their job role as well, there's a little bit more of a flexible working that they can do. So it's also about outcomes and experience for women, but also what our workforce are experiencing from the day-to-day work. We've got some big shifts going on in maternity at the moment. One of the major shifts that we've just done is we've had an electronic patient record since around 2017. We've just moved over to a different digital platform and that's called Badginet. That is a more interactive documentation system that the clinicians can use and the benefits of Badginet is some of the neighbouring trusts also use the Badginet system. So we're able to communicate with our cross-border trusts with any women that are needing to go to any tertiary centres. We're looking at the hospital to community shift and that goes hand in hand with continuity of carer, getting patients in care in the most appropriate place, often at children's centres or within their own home environment. So that's working about how we can strengthen partnership working with our GPs and health We, previously, Lincolnshire has long time, for a long time been a negative outlier around our smoking status. So over recent years, we've actually made huge leaps and bounds with our reduction of smoking during pregnancy. We know it's the single most important thing that we can do to affect the outcome for mum and for baby. We've implemented tobacco dependency service so that all women are automatically referred to a team, we've called them the Star Team because of that fabulous. They then get individualised support from the particular Star Team throughout their pregnancy and the postnatal period. And you can see from the stats that we've provided the significant downturn in our smoking during pregnancy. Ultimately, the smoking during pregnancy is key to reducing our stillbirth rate as well. So continuity of carer does continue to be our main focus, both for the workforce and for the women and we will continue to work with our system partners. When we, we have got four continuity of carer teams across the Lincolnshire County. When we set up the continuity teams back in 2017 and have continued to do so, we've aimed to have those continuity of carer teams in areas of deprivation. So because we know those areas of deprivation, we can make the most impact in. So we've got continuity of carer teams in Gainsborough, in Skegness, in the Wolds area, so that's Horn Castle and Ragby area and we have a continuity of carer team in the Sleaford area. So our ambition is to continue to roll those continuity of carer teams out, focusing on the areas of the greatest need. The three-year delivery plan is our strategic direction that we're following, that does end in March 26 next year, as Terry described, that really gives our local drivers about where we need to go, keeps us on focus as a service about what we need to deliver. We have had the maternity inquiry announcement of the 14 trusts and we're expecting that report to come out in some draft format to trusts and early learning from December and January next year. And I would imagine that's probably going to plan the next three years, delivery of the maternity and neonatal services. So we have, within our hospital services, we have a strong, robust governance process following any incidents and it's just ensuring that we've got that independent look on when we have an incident that happens, that is regulated by an external organisation called the MNSI, which is the Maternity and Neonatal Safety Investigation Team. And we also work with our partners within the ICB, whereas at an incident review meeting, we will have an external representative on that panel. We work closely with the Maternity and Neonatal Voice Partnership, Beth, which Terry's talked about already, so that we are always keeping the woman's voice at the focus of all these incidents. We have to learn from what women are saying about maternity services and particularly if a woman's been involved in an incident, that is what leads our direction of that particular incident so that we're answering some of those concerns directly and quickly as we can. I think I'm handing over to you, Terry, thank you.
Thank you, Emma. So I just wanted to mention about the Perinatal Community Mental Health Team and the Perinatal Trauma and Loss Care Service, which is a very important part of our LMNS. I hadn't realised, I was quite shocked by this figure, that perinatal mental health is the leading cause of death from six weeks postnatal to one year post-mortem, which is quite stark. And in the service that we have in Lincolnshire is around treating moderate severe psychological stress, post-traumatic stress disorder and tocophobia, which is extreme fear of childbirth. The Perinatal Community Mental Health Team held their 10th anniversary conference in May of this year during the maternal mental health week and over 80 people from partner organisations joined us and it helped raise the awareness of maternal mental health problems, advocating for women and families who are impacted and helping professionals understand how they can get the information they need and better support women that need it. There is a recognition that the not-in-review of maternity services by Donna Ockington, as Emma's referenced, may affect some of our families from Lincolnshire that either chose to book there or had their care transferred there due to needing, their babies needing specialist neonatal care. That report's now expected in 2026 and we also reference the Thirlwell Inquiry reporting to neonatal deaths at the Counties of Chester is expected in autumn and there'll be slightly some recommendations that will come out of that. So there's a lot going on in the maternity world, as you can tell. I just wanted to mention about breastfeeding. The LMNS as a team, we commissioned a year-long breastfeeding awareness campaign called Latch On Lincolnshire and the campaign aimed to raise awareness of the health and emotional benefits of breastfeeding, provide clear, accessible information to expect in new parents about where to find support and encourage workplaces to create more supportive environments for breastfeeding employees. And you may have seen the campaign messages and materials that have been provided and circulated, including breastfeeding welcome here window stickers for companies, cafes, people like that to be able to display to help create more inclusive and supportive public spaces for breastfeeding families. I'm just going to hand over to Emma to talk about workforce.
So for workforce, these are absolutely key for being able to deliver the services that we need, particularly when the spotlight is on maternity services. We absolutely need to keep midwives and obstetricians through the profession. So I'm really proud that we work closely with Lincoln University now and I think that's been fantastic for Lincolnshire because we're now growing our own workforce. Previously, we were training with Nottingham and Leicester and different places and midwives weren't always staying, but I'm really pleased to say since we've had midwives coming through the Lincoln University, it's been hugely successful. I'm pleased to say we are, we don't have any vacancies, which is, in our world, is amazing. So I'm very proud to say that we're able to retain the staff that we've got, which is incredible and we've been able to offer all of our newly qualified midwives that qualified in September jobs at our organisation as well. We continue to work with the workforce about how we develop their skills, ensuring that we listen to our workforce as well with some of any concerns and how we can continually improve. We acknowledge, listening to women, we also need to listen to our staff too. With this, been some challenges around neonatal specialists and how, how many neonatal specialists we have within our neonatal units, which does align with the national picture. So we have a trajectory that's working with the LMNS and our university providers around how we can improve the recruitment and retention of our neonatal specialists that work in the neonatal units. And I think that's it. So whether, just to conclude, from myself and Terry, you've heard that the spotlight is well and truly shining on maternity and neonatal services and we're mindful that actually a lot of women at this time, it's really, really difficult for women and families that are coming to birth at any of our maternity units. We don't always get it right, but we're open to listen and we're open to meet with families and continuously improve. I feel very proud of the position that our hospitals are in within Lincolnshire and that the service that we're providing our Lincolnshire patients is really good and we can only continue to get better. And I think as an LMNS, we're a very strong LMNS going into the cluster and I think we've evidenced and proven that actually working together, we get the right outcomes for our patients and families. Thank you.
Thank you. So we now move to questions. Please indicate to me or to the vice chairman if you wish to speak. We have councillor Morgan first, please.
Thank you and thank you for the report. Can I just, I can ask a few questions. I actually come from Grantham and represent Grantham community and a recent Freedom of Information request indicated over 1,000 babies were born from the Grantham area last year alone and it's a growing area, our population's anticipated to grow up to 72-plus thousand over the next few years. It's already above that, actually it's more like 75,000 is going to reach. What plans have you got to review the decision to close Grantham maternity unit, given the high number of births that are actually occurring in the area and given the risks of births in out-of-transit, which has occurred, and also the distances the mothers who are having to travel? In particular, my concern, I noticed what you were saying about the poverty and the need to focus on those areas, you'd mentioned Skegness, Wolds, Sleaford. Grantham has got two of the biggest areas of poverty or highest areas of poverty in the county and two of our big council estates didn't get mentioned. And those, you've mentioned in your report about delivering equity in service, but I have to say, from our community's perspective, that's not how it feels when you consider that we have some of the poorest people having to travel some of the furthest distances, women, in order to access the key services, maternity services. And I think there are some areas of risk, for example, emergency cesareans where time can be absolutely critical and there was, you'll be aware, there was a horrific case that came to Nottingham because some of our mums go to Nottingham now and the baby didn't make it. And in fact, my understanding is that was largely due to delays. So I would like to know. understanding is that was largely due to delays. So I would like to know what plans you have to review that decision. Thank you. And because, one more point. The government's policy is changing again. I feel sorry for you because it swings backwards and forwards. It was all about, only a few years, a couple of years ago, homegrown, and it's fantastic. I totally support that policy, by the way. But now, the new government's going back to, oh, that's not viable. So actually, let's just start looking at shipping people in, etc. So how are we managing that balance and coping with that? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Morgan. So if I can just talk about Grantham issue, and then I'll hand over to Emma to talk about home births. So from our point of view, there is no current work going on looking at reviewing the service at Grantham. I'd be interested to know the figures that you've seen, because they're different to the figures that I've seen. So whether we can have a conversation outside of the meeting, because I don't want to break protocol, but understand, if I can understand that a little bit more from you. But certainly looking at deliveries by primary care network area. So Grantham and rural are 540 births last year, and Sleaford area was 333. So that would make 873 from that area. And that's actually been a steady decline. So in 2018, 2019, we had that same figure was 1,009, and it's gradually fallen, 923, 918, 924, 894, and 873. So I'd just be interested to see where your figures came from, to understand how you've seen an increase. And yet, everything's telling us that it's actually reducing.
Yeah, I actually put in a Freedom of Information request to the trust and asked them how many births there'd been last year in Grantham, and they came back with over 1,000.
Please continue.
Okay. Shall I respond to a couple of your other points that you made? Absolutely. I think, just to confirm, we haven't got any internationally educated midwives. We do have internationally educated nurses within the organisation, but not internationally educated midwives, because we've not required that. So while we continue on the homegrown ethos around our midwives, that's absolutely fantastic. Continuity of care, you're right. We need, that will be part of the long-term plan. So the 10-year plan is quite clear about continuity of care and ensuring we get it in the right places. So as part of the population health data that we have access to via the ICB and LMNS, we'll be able to target those areas in Grantham. I hear what you're saying about Grantham women having to travel. The consultants do do an antenatal clinic outing in Grantham so that they haven't got to travel in for their consultant appointments and for their antenatal clinic scans and to see their community midwives. Obviously, they're locally based. But I do hear your concerns. It's about how we can improve those outcomes, and I think continuity of care. So I want to give assurance that it is on the agenda, continuity of care, and is part of the 10-year plan. And we will be looking at the population health data that maps and really aligns how we strategically move forward with delivery. Thank you.
Thank you. I have councillor Lee next, please.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, congratulations. You've obviously made huge improvements, and congratulations on the hard work that's gone into doing that. I've got a couple of questions. Page 2223 talks about the NHS England Three-Year Delivery Plan, not to confuse it with the NHS 10-Year Plan, but the Three-Year Plan. There's the fourth themes, and on the fourth ones, it talks about equitable care. I wondered if you could tell us a bit about what in practice it looks like for people of different ethnicities and people who live in areas of deprivation. Just not like loads, but just some examples of this is what it would look like. This is how we support them during the pregnancy, and perhaps with breastfeeding or whatever. You talked about the support for military personnel. I think that's great. It must be really hard moving around. So just a brief example of what that looks like in practice. Next question, I wondered if under the 10-year plan, the NHS 10-year plan, because obviously, if you get a different government, given the state of the NHS by the time we got a different government, we had to have a different focus if we still wanted to have an NHS that actually worked. So there is a change of focus, and it's down, it's more in the community. That's the aim. Are you looking in maternity to support more home deliveries? Is that part of that plan? Because I would say, you know, that's probably a good idea. But I think that's most of my questions anyway. It's understanding what this looks like in practice, and is it going to be more in the community where that is safe and possible? Thank you.
Thank you. I think you make some really good points. So it is about delivering care closer to those particular kind of populations and working in a slightly different way. So with the partnership working with the MVP, which is the patient's voice, we've been able to take, for instance, care to children's centres, which is closer to the woman's home. So for instance, like in Skegness, the midwives are working in collaboration with the health visitors. It's working in a slightly different model. If we need a woman that's got particular transport issues, we will go and provide the care in the home rather than providing, making her come in or with whatever she struggles to do. It's about collecting the voice of our unheard women as well, you know, our Black and Asian ethnic minority groups, and our women that have English as a second language. It's how we can tap into those groups. We also have pockets of deprivation, and it's really important that we provide continuity of care and care that's deliverable and appropriate to them, particularly around translation of some of the information that we provide. You raised a point earlier about how we always use acronyms, and we do do that within our service as well. So it's making sure that somebody with learning disabilities or is unable to read has that information in a different format that's suitable to her. So, and I think working with the MVP, we've been able to do that. We're not, we haven't got it 100% right yet. There's still work to be done because there's certain pockets of community out there. We've got links with the traveller community now as well. Traveller community's often been quite a difficult community to engage with, but we've now been able to tap into some of those community groups. Going back to the report around the home birth, absolutely, informed choice is really important in maternity and neonatal care. It's not for us to decide how and where a woman delivers, as long as she's got the risks and benefits of all her options. That's our ethos of maternity care. It's about making care as safe as we possibly can. A woman may choose to birth in a home environment where we wouldn't always recommend it, but as long as she has the risks and benefits, it's her decision to make. So nationally, we're sitting around average with our home birth rate. We've always been quite proud about our home birth rate. And I think it's important, we've noticed certainly within our continuity of care teams, having that one-to-one continuous same midwife has, does actually increase that informed choice and increase the home birth rate. In the military, yeah, absolutely. The military are a very difficult population because they move around the country so often. They're often quite isolated. They don't tend to have any friends. You know, the husbands have gone off to work. So they can be quite an isolated community. So particularly around postnatal depression, and Terri touched upon the, you know, the Embrace Report, which is around maternal deaths and suicide. So it's really important we engage with those communities. Did I answer all your questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have councillor Martin next, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, thank you for that report. Very interesting. The seven-year reduction, running reduction in births is quite fascinating, actually, because obviously the knock-on impact of schools, etc., further down the chain. You said it's following a national trend, but I may have missed it, but there's no obvious home birth data in there. If you could just clarify whether home births are actually following that trend, national trend as well, down over the seven years? Other question, the hospital of birth, for Grantham, there seems to be five different hospitals within the map. Could you just briefly explain how the mothers get a choice or allocation to which hospital? Is it their choice? Obviously, that would be preferable, and it helps with stress and all that kind of stuff. I'm just wondering how that works. And finally, on recruitment, obviously, midwifery training through the University of Lincoln is a great thing. But you say that the neonatal specialist is an issue. I was just wondering, could you explain what cluster arrangements means? I'm not quite sure. Thank you.
Thank you for those questions. So the home birth rate nationally has seen a decline as well. I think certainly at, when we first meet a woman during her pregnancy, we offer all women informed choice, and they have lots of choices about where they birth. Some come with an idea of which hospital they want to choose to birth at, or they want a home birth. It's logistically, a lot of the women are choosing to birth at the cross-border hospitals, for instance. Some of our Spalding women choose to deliver at Peterborough because mileage-wise, they are closer to go to Peterborough than they are to come to Boston or Lincoln. And I think for Grantham, we have, we see very similar trends. It tends to be a choice and location and whereabouts they live in the town, whether they live closer to Nottingham. I think also, previous pregnancies often is a big influence about where they choose to have their second and third babies. So if they've had a baby at Nottingham previously, they may well choose to go back to Nottingham the next time. We have seen a 5% increase over the last five years of women choosing to come back to our organisations to deliver for whatever reason, which I'm pleased to see. Recruitment, sorry, I just lost. Can you just repeat that question about the recruitment? I only wrote recruitment down.
It refers to cluster arrangements, saying that you've introduced cluster arrangements or something, which helps with retention, I think it said. And I was just wondering what cluster arrangements for these... Where are we?
Okay, that's around the neonatal specialists, isn't it? Yeah, so the neonatal specialist, it's around how we can, so the neonatal units, I don't know whether you want to expand a little bit on that, but it's around the network. So we work together as an ODN, they call it, a neonatal network. Shall I let you take that, because it's your field of specialty?
Yeah, so we have something called the East Midlands Operational Delivery Network for Neonatal Care. And the idea is, is that we look at the neonatal workforce across the whole region, recognising that there are specialist units in Nottingham, Leicester and Leicester. And one of the issues that we do have recruits, we do a lot of our Grow Your Own, we get people into neonatal care. I'm actually a neonatal nurse myself. That's my clinical background. And you get people in, and you train them up. They become qualified in speciality. But one of the things that happens is that you, as a neonatal nurse, you quite often want to be looking after some of those most sickest, critically ill babies. And I certainly did. I've always worked in, generally worked in tertiary centres. So we lost, so when Nottingham expanded and their critical units, their level, their level three network, their level, sorry, their level three unit expanded, we lost a lot of staff across to there. So it's about how do we keep those people interested in looking at things like rotational posts. So can people have the option to go and spend time working in those units and things like that? So it's about looking at the whole, all of the units across the whole, the whole region, and not just thinking in isolation just about Lincolnshire. And even within Lincolnshire, you know, Pilgrim is a level one unit, and Lincoln's a level two unit. So how can we transfer staff across? Because the two, the types of neonatal care are very, very different across, depending on which level, level unit you are. Does that help? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I have councillor Smith next, please.
Thank you, Chairman. You say about staffing and there's no vacancies, but a friend's daughter two weeks ago was due to have a baby at Lincoln, and they were closed. She was told that there were staffing problems. And the same happened at Queen Medical Practice, at Nottingham City Hospital. In the end, she had to go to Doncaster, and even they didn't want to take her. But the baby was on the way. It literally was on the way. And it just seems strange, in 2025, a lady can't just turn up to a hospital and deliver a baby when she's told four hospitals are closed because there's no staffing or beds available for them. And as much as this report is wonderful, and I'm glad to see the improvements, it just seems rather a shock that only two weeks ago, a lady can't deliver a baby. Thank you.
Thank you. That's really sad to hear. At times of high acuity, September is a very busy month, and I'm not excusing it, but September is a very busy month for babies. I'm pleased to say that Lincoln maternity unit doesn't close very often, so that was an awful experience for that particular lady of yours, and I can only apologise for that. What we do do as a maternity service, because we have two sites, we do work between the two sites, ensuring that if we can't accept a lady onto the unit, at one particular unit, we offer the choice of going to another unit. And I don't know the particular details of that case, and I'd be really keen to find out, because I'd like to hear her experience of what she found, because we need to learn from that. We do have times of high acuity, but we have protocols and guidelines about how we manage that and how we can safely deliver a care. Maternity is very much like A&E. We don't know what's coming through the door. We only have a certain amount of staff on, we only have a certain round of beds. So there is not a lot of day-to-day operational management of a maternity labour ward and maternity unit. So I'd really like, I'd like to know some more information about that particular case so that we can work with that lady, because that's not the experience we want. And it doesn't happen very often at Lincoln. Often, what we do do is we would close, you know, we don't close because we can never close. We never know what's going to just pitch up at the door. But at times, we have to manage the acuity and the safety of all patients, and we have to make difficult decisions. And that's not one that I'd want a patient to be involved in. So I'm happy to pick that up outside.
Can I just come back a minute? I mean, Doncaster kept her for two days, and she did have wonderful treatment there. It was just a bit of a shock that she couldn't get into, she was starting to panic. Thank you.
Thank you. I have councillor Mackinson-Saunders, and then councillor McGee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unfortunately, I come from the bit of the map that's orange. And you don't tell us, unfortunately, you haven't told us how good that that hospital trust is. In your notes, you put the Hull Teaching Trust, but that doesn't come under Hull. It comes under Ghoul and North Lincolnshire, which is undergoing all sorts of changes, and we don't know what's going on there half the time. I run a baby bank in Louth, and I've run it for nearly five years now. So I do hear lots of before-birth mums and lots of after-birth mums. And some of the treatment, and you're not going to be able to answer this, I know, but at least I'll get a voice to say it. If we have mums from Louth who want to breastfeed, they have a second-class service at Grimsby. And that isn't good enough because you're talking about equity of service. And I just think that's very, very sad. Somehow, the services, we have quite a deprived area, and on to the east coast, we have a deprived area. And I think the services really do lack quite a lot, actually. And it's a shame because having a baby is an important time, a milestone in your life. And women do tend to remember the midwives that delivered their babies as well, which is quite nice, isn't it? So I do have concerns about the service that's going on in Grimsby and how it serves. I mean, the ICB is paying for that service, and we do try to highlight it if we ever get a chance to pass on the information that we get. But it's surprising how we had, and I shouldn't be racist about this, I'm going to have to say an Indian girl because she wasn't used to our ways, and she was worried that her family were all in India and so forth. And she had no clue, she was really worried about something as daft as what happens to the afterbirth after I've delivered. And we were able to reassure her, and we guided her to the, luckily, it was social worker, a child, a child social worker in with a girl that she was looking after, happened to be in the baby bank at the same time. She was able to reassure her, and we sent her down to the children's centre. But there seems to be a gulf in some of the information that people are getting. And that's a shame because it should be a happy time of your life, and it's not an illness after all, is it? It's all the rest of it. So I do have some concerns about Grimsby. And if you could tell me how good the standard is at Grimsby. The other problem is if baby's not thriving, they send mum off to Scunthorpe. Well, from where I live, to Scunthorpe is over 40 miles. Unless you've got a car, you ain't going to be able to get there. And so that, so mums do worry about those sort of things, especially if they've got smaller kids as well. So there are bits of the service which don't probably work as well as they do. And after all, we can't choose where we go to. Well, you could, I suppose, choose to go to Lincoln, but most of your GPs would send you up to Grimsby anyway. And all the services, the antenatal service is based at Louth County Hospital, so it just wouldn't work with it. So I do have some concerns about it from my area. Thank you.
So, yeah, thank you. So in terms of, and that unfortunately dropped off the list that we provided, but it requires improvement. So it's not as high standard as certainly in ICQC's eyes. And we know that their local LMNS, LMNS, are doing a lot of work around that. Certainly, if we hear anything that comes from women that birth outside of Lincolnshire, we do raise that with the trust. So if there have been any feedback into our system and through our MNVP chair, because our MNVP- system and through our M N V P chair, because our M N V P chair is there for the whole of, the whole of Lincolnshire, not just the, the women that birth at U L T H. So if we do hear anything, we certainly raise that and we, we have those communication links in with the local I C Bs and the local, the, the local LMNS. In terms of the breastfeeding, I'm really disappointed to hear, to hear about the experience, the poor experiences. And the breastfeeding service that we have is Lincolnshire-wise, it's actually hosted and run within Lincolnshire County Council, and it is, it is a county-wide service, so it feel, it feels really sad that somebody, just because they've birthed over the border, isn't getting that support. And again, if we, if we hear any stories like that, we can connect them in with the right people to make sure they get the right support that they need.
Do you, do you have any brochures about that, that we could display, so people would know where to get in touch with, if you've got some?
Yes, certainly we have promotional, promotional material from our M N V P chair, our maternity neonatal voice project chair, who promotes that ser, that service and promotes those avenues of feedback, because the feedback, as I say, is not just about U L T Hs wherever women birth.
Want to bombard me with information, please do.
I certainly will, yeah.
Thank you. Have councillor McGee next, please.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for such an excellent report as well. It was very interesting to read, particularly with regards to smoking figures and those decreasing, that's impressive work. I just wanted to continue the theme of equity, because you were asked by councillor Lee how you went about engaging with peoples from groups that particularly may struggle. We know that statistically, nationally, women from Black and ethnic minorities are more likely to unfortunately die in childbirth and have stillbirths. Are we gathering data on how we are doing in Lincolnshire and are we bucking the trend or at least bringing those figures down here? Thank you.
Thank you, that's a really great question. So we have a Black and Asian mental health group that's actually run by some of our obstetricians and led by that, and we've linked in with the Alive Church in Lincoln and we've done some drop-in sessions. We've got a lot of the Black and Asian women that have been through the service over the last 18 months to two years that were involved, and they're really driving through the service what's important to them, because we all experience and wish care in a different way. I'm really pleased to say it is bucking the trend and they actually won a staff award on Friday night at the Lincolnshire Showground for the work that they're doing with that particular population, so, of piece of work. And I, I'm proud to say it's actually being driven by some of the consultant obstetricians who absolutely want to make a difference for our women and getting it right. So, and that's the difference with setting these groups up, targeting the support, letting the group lead the outcomes, what do, what does that particular community of women and families need? They need care delivered in a slightly different way to perhaps what I would need. And we've found that that works, we've got to break down those barriers.
Following up from that, would it be possible for me to have some links to that group? I'm part of a very fledgling multicultural group in Gainsborough in West Lindsay, and we've had a fantastic change to our local demographic, and I'm really concerned that women, particularly in Gainsborough, given the levels of deprivation, may be missing out on those kind of opportunities. So some connections would be fabulous, thank you very much.
And could I have some as well? I could pass it on to the lady that I was dealing with.
Through the chair, please. Councillor Lee next, please.
Thanks, Chair, and I will be brief. I say this with the very best and positive intentions. I wonder if we could actually have at a future scrutiny meeting, an item where we drill down on the equalities bit of this, you know, rather than the whole report. And, and I'm concerned that two people at least have raised specific cases. I wonder if we could have feedback, not with names obviously, but about those, about what's going on in those areas, maybe in six months' time, right, this is how it looked now and this is, this is the improvement that has been made. Maybe six months isn't appropriate, but I really do feel that we've, we've got gaps on our work programme where we can put things in, and I think we've got an opportunity and there seems to be a need to actually drill down on this element of it. Thank you.
Yeah, we're happy to provide that data. It's certainly a bit like you said we did, this is what you told us, this is what we've done about it and this is the impact, so yeah, happy to do that.
Thank you. I have councillor Morgan next and then councillor Corey, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, thank you. Yeah, I have to say, I actually asked for this to come to committee, because we hadn't looked at maternity as a committee for a very long time, so I am really pleased we are looking at it now. You mentioned about the, councillor Smith raised a point about the unit being, units being closed, and from your reply, what came back was actually, despite the fact we think we've got full staff, there are unit closures. I think if we're picking up councillor Lee's request for more information, I'd like to know how frequently our units are closed. And the other thing is, what the, what the impact is, what the patient journey is, if we, or the mum's journey is, if I, for example, so I've heard this with acute care, and I have a vision of the same thing happening with maternity, that you could have a mum going all the way from Grantham to Lincoln, only to find the units closed and then being referred again on somewhere else, which to me is, is really just not acceptable. So I would really be interested in that, thank you.
Can I come back on that point? Yeah, we do collect that data, we collect data on unit closures, so we've got that data to provide. And we also, we would never turn a woman away if she drove from Grantham to Lincoln, we would never turn her away if she was presented and she was in labour, absolutely we would accommodate. So usually we have that conversation with the families beforehand to say, this is the position we're in, and try and find somewhere for the family, but we also collect feedback on and stats about any women that may well have been diverted. I am pleased to say it doesn't happen very often, it was, I'm very saddened to hear that it doesn't ever happen very often within our trust, but we've got the data.
Thank you. I would point out, councillor Morgan, that we have got an item on emergency planning coming up, and that's exactly one of the sort of examples of where we would like the reassurance that the N H S deals with sudden emergencies like that and can deal with them. So it, it's also on the agenda through that route as well. Councillor Corey, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I don't usually sit on this committee, so I find this subject absolutely fascinating. And I support the, the comments that have been made earlier from colleagues about wanting further information on those emerging community groups. But if I can take you back to the military families, did I remember rightly that you said that, that they, they're often isolated, they're away from their extended families? Are women in these communities more likely then to experience perinatal and postnatal trauma? Do we have figures on that and what are we doing? So when we're looking at the other groups that we're trying to reach and support, what are we doing to reach and support those women? Thank you.
Yeah, I think absolutely, and that's why we, we see the importance of the military care navigator to really help. And what that, that post does, it does a lot of things, it works across the military, puts people in touch with support groups and things like that, to make sure that they have that, that wraparound support them and they don't lead into that isolation that Emma referred to, but also links them in with the right services. So, so his, his name's Dave, he's Dave James, he's ex-military himself, so he really understands the challenges that the military. And I have to say that he goes above and beyond, because he doesn't, you know, he ends up picking up loads of other issues around, you know, oh, while you're here, we've got an older child that we're struggling with to try and get across services. So he really gets in there and, you know, he's, it's been reflected by the fact, R A F Waddington, he actually got a commendation from the station commander about the work and recognising the work he does. So he, he's our person, he's our linchpin that just, just pulls everything together, pulls people, and he has that individual contact with each family, so it's not just, you know, a mythical post that sits far away, he actually meets the families, gets involved, hears about their experiences and then feeds them in.
Thank you, Chair, and if I may, and you've got statistics to demonstrate that following interventions, that you've got improved outcomes with these families?
Yeah, we collect case studies on all of them, so we, we can certainly provide those, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you, councillor Morgan, you want to come back again quickly?
May, thank you so much. I just want to pick up, if I may, again around the perinatal care. I, I think actually it was certainly a shock to me to realise it was such an issue, how it was the second cause, largest cause of death for women, for women which are mums, new mums, which was really quite shocking. I wonder what, I don't think that there's that level of support in the community generally. I will say locally, it's all about men's, men's mental health, men's mental health, men's mental health. We very rarely actually hear about women's mental health and in particular about this particular issue. So it's, I, I'm thinking if there's any way that we could share that information or if you've got any literature or anything, firstly about the issue and also where people across the county can go for help, because I, I just want to understand how you reach out to areas, for example, like Grantham, like Skegness or wherever. How do those, how do those women get that support? Thank you.
Yeah, I'm happy to speak, so Lucy Pearce is our, is our perinatal mental health lead, works with Eve, in Eve's organisation, and Lucy's really engaged with the LMNS, she sits on our LMNS board, we have really good links in with her, so I'd be happy to speak to her and just find out what they're doing in terms of getting the message out about their service, the fact that they're out there. And yeah, so, so I'm quite happy to pick that up with her.
Thank you. Councillor McGee again, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. We do have a fantastic perinatal service at LPFT, and when mums come through to midwives or they get picked up by health visitors, if there are issues, they, they can be referred into that service for support and GPs are aware of it as well, so it's a very specialised, excellent service. And, and I have the pleasure of working alongside some of that team sometimes. But I was, you did make me think of a valid point, which was when mums need to be hospitalised with their mental health in a perinatal situation, are they being treated in hospital in Lincolnshire or are they having to go over the borders when they need inpatient treatment due to mental health linked to their pregnancy or birth?
Yeah, so we don't have an inpatient unit for, for perinatal mental health, particularly within, within Lincolnshire, no?
And I suspected as much, which means that our Lincolnshire women, if they experience severe mental health issues, are having to travel, I presume, to Derbyshire or similar places for that specialist treatment? Is that something that we are looking at in terms of improvement? Because that's some distance travelled, if you've just had a baby and you're experiencing severe mental health difficulty and you are having to travel an hour away, that means potentially family members are having to take care of other children at home, how do we go and visit? How do we support in such an isolating, difficult moment for a mum, having to go so far away from home to receive treatment is, is not really appropriate? So are we doing anything about that?
So, and you'll be aware that the primary objective is to people to be managed at home and to get that support, that wraparound support they need at home. But certainly, you know, in terms of specialist mental, specialist mental health, I don't think there's any specific work at the moment about bringing in an inpatient into, an inpatient unit, that, because that would be really, really specialist and it would be, fortunately is only a very small proportion, but recognising that for each woman that affects, it, it has a massive impact.
On that note, could we have some figures then about how many women from Lincolnshire are actually being sent out of area to receive that specialist support? Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, happy to provide that.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions coming, so I have one or two of my own. Could I ask, I was quite shocked by the percentage of people smoking, and although it's incredible to see how quickly that's come down over five years, I think it's, it's halved. But it begs the question, given that we know that that happened and that those women were smoking at the time of birth five years ago, are those children who will now be five years old, are they monitored or is there any ongoing longitudinal research about, about the effects upon them?
Not specifically, I'm aware about in Lincolnshire, but although nationally there's lots of research on the long-term effects of smoking and alcohol use within, within pregnancy, and they would get follow-up, so if any, if any issues were picked up during their, their birth or in their, their postnatal period, any issues, they, they would obviously be followed up, the same as what any other child would be. But in terms of studies, I don't think we're doing anything specific in Lincolnshire, but we obviously are aware of lots of different national studies.
Thank you for that. Just to follow up on certain other things that have been said and perhaps to give more clarity, when people do go to hospitals outside Lincolnshire, how joined up are the community services when they come back into Lincolnshire?
Yeah, so we've got good relationships with our cross-border hospitals. So once, for instance, if a lady had a baby at Nottingham, Nottingham would contact the maternity service in Lincolnshire when that lady was due to go home, and then postnatal care is provided by the same team that she's been having her antenatal care from. So they get continuous antenatal and postnatal care from us, they just deliver at a different unit, so that then follows up. So a woman that delivered at Nottingham would have the same level of care postnatally as a lady that delivered at Lincoln, it's universal.
Thank you very much. So if there's no other speakers, I'd like to sum up. So the action proposed is that we note the report. I would like to propose that the committee thanks the presenters for sharing the information on maternity and neonatal services and for answering the committee's questions, and also to committing to further, providing further information requested by members of the committee after the meeting. Furthermore, that the United Lincolnshire Teaching Hospitals N H S Trust be congratulated on its maternity heat map score being the finest in the region. And finally, that the committee regrets that there are some Lincolnshire women birthing at hospital outside the county, which is related, is rated as required improvements. Do I have a second, please?
Wasn't a second, can we just add something on about having a future meeting to, to drill down on some of the aspects that we've raised?
We, we could deal with that in the, on the section on future, if you don't mind. Okay, thank you. Sorry, I didn't, you'll second it, thank you. So all those in favour?
So I just wanted to, sorry.
All, all those against, please? That, thank you, that's carried. So.
If we could add a point about equity, we, I will never.
Can, can we bring that on?
Sorry.
That concludes our items, thank you very much for attending. That concludes that item. We now are a little bit early, but our speakers are here for item six on the agenda. And councillor McGee, I'm afraid that as you have declared your membership of LPFT on the, on your trust, that you're not able to attend for this item, apologies for that. I'm afraid I have to apply the rules, yes, please. Sorry about that. So we now move on to item six, which is the dementia services intense support and hospital care item. It was circulated as part of the agenda pack on pages 33 to 77. However, pages 69 to 77 were included as part of this item in error, and they are not relevant to the consultation on the enhanced community dementia service. So apologies for that oversight in the agenda pack. The presenter is Eve Baird, Chief Operating Officer. Would you like to present your report in 10 or 12 minutes, please?
Thank you very much, Chair. So the paper provides an update to the committee regarding the outcome of extensive engagement in relation to a proposal to permanently close Manthorpe Ward in Grantham and substantively fund the countywide dementia home treatment team that was introduced as a pilot service in November 2020. Now, earlier papers have come to this committee and we've been on a journey, I think, with the committee, but I'm very conscious that we've got new, new members of the committee since we started that journey. So I am going to provide a bit of background information and a bit of context around this. So the background is outlined in the paper, but I'm going to highlight some key information for the committee's awareness. So Manthorpe Ward in Grantham is an 18-bedded dementia assessment and treatment ward and provided a countywide service, so it provided a service to individuals across Lincolnshire who required an inpatient admission. And in 2019, it was one of two dementia wards in the county, the other being Langworth Ward in Lincoln. The purpose of Langworth Ward and Manthorpe Ward is to provide assessment and treatment for people with dementia who are experiencing complex problems and needs and support the development of long-term care planning. It's not, neither ward is intended to be, provide long-term nursing or residential care. So there's, there's a very specific function for the wards. In April 2020, the trust had to close Manthorpe Ward as part of our response to the challenges of continuing to provide health services during a global pandemic, and staff from the ward were redeployed to other wards in the trust and to community services. And I think for those who are newer to the committee, the background of that was that we often. to the committee, the background of that was that we often had empty beds across our dementia inpatient wards. And staffing was a real challenge. So it made sense to consolidate at that point and be able to provide safe care from one unit rather than trying to spread staff across two. So staff from the ward were redeployed to other wards in the trust and to enhance some of our community services. And at the same time that we were in the midst of a global pandemic, the trust was already providing a home treatment service for older adults with mental health needs, which was demonstrating really positive outcomes for both the patients and their families and carers, and really reducing the need for admissions into inpatient services. Feedback from our older adult population really highlighted the inequity of provision for older adults with dementia when we compared that to what we were now able to provide to our older adults with mental health needs. And in November twenty twenty, we started a pilot of a dementia specific home treatment service. Since that time, LPFT as a trust has continued to monitor data and patient, family and carer feedback to assess the impact of both the dementia home treatment team and the ongoing closure of Manthorpe Ward. I think it's worth noting that since the temporary closure, we've had no older adult with dementia who's had to receive inpatient care outside of Lincolnshire because there haven't been available beds in Lincolnshire. So the beds that we've got on Langworth Ward are meeting the demands that we are seeing for inpatient admissions at this point in time. In April twenty twenty three, with support from the integrated care board and this committee, the pilot of the dementia home treatment team was extended for a further twelve months, along with the temporary closure of Manthorpe, to allow for further development of the service and also a full evaluation of the approach. And at this time, the trust also engaged the East Midlands Clinical Senate, who undertook an independent clinical review of the potential future model and also the care pathways we were offering. The East Midlands Clinical Senate supported the potential future model. They really endorsed the level of engagement that we'd had around moving to that model and acknowledged the alignment to best practice, national priorities and current planning guidance of that future model. The paper shares with the committee details around the model of dementia home treatment team, findings in more detail from the East Midlands Clinical Senate, and findings from our own internal evaluations, as well as outputs from the extensive engagement that's been undertaken in relation to the trust proposal to permanently close Manthorpe Ward and substantively fund the dementia home treatment team from the associated funds with Manthorpe Ward. I also want to note that only thirteen percent of patients supported by our dementia home treatment team have gone on to require admission. And that's over a thousand patients. And what that tells us is that what we're able to do is provide meaningful and effective care and treatment for people in their own homes, which is, it's a big agenda for us across healthcare anyway. But for people with dementia, particularly uprooting them from familiar environments and placing them in often busy and chaotic inpatient services often has quite a detrimental impact on their own wellbeing, as well as the wellbeing of their families. So that's been a really positive thing for us. Whilst there have been a small number of concerns shared through the public engagement, the positive impact of the dementia home treatment team on patient outcomes and on the reduced need for inpatient admissions has been clear. The concerns that were raised within the engagement were generally from within our public engagement, rather than from people who had used the service. So the feedback from people who would access the service was really positive and really supportive of the model. There were concerns raised through the public engagement in relation to the service was mainly focused on the impact of travel to Lincoln if someone from the Grantham area required an admission. Other concerns that were raised were more broadly related to dementia pathways as a whole, rather than this specific service provision. So we did have concerns raised around, for example, the provision of appropriate respite support when families are caring for individuals with dementia. As a trust, we're absolutely committed to supporting families to be able to visit and maintain relationships during admissions if they're required. And we work with individual families to make sure that we've got mechanisms in place to do that. But what we have seen overall is that fewer people are needing to travel since we've introduced the countywide home treatment service than were required to travel when we were reliant on purely an inpatient model. Regarding the wider concerns about the pathways, we have shared those with our relevant health and social care commissioners and partners. And we are pushing as much as we can as one provider in that pathway to highlight the gaps that we know we've got within our services. So this proposal has now been through both the trusts and the integrated care board governance meetings. And in LPFT's public board meeting on the ninth of October, the trust board approved the permanent closure of Manthorpe Ward and the use of associated funding to substantively fund the dementia home treatment team. The committee's asked to note the outcome of the trust board decision. And the paper does outline the next steps for us as a trust. But the committee's also invited to consider their next steps and your next steps as a committee. And there's some information to support that conversation included in section ten of the report. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much. So we now move to questions. Again, please indicate to me or to the vice chair, and if you wish to speak. And I have councillor Morgan first, please.
Thank you. I feel like a bit of a stuck record because you mentioned Grantham again. And the Grantham feedback that you've had is concerned with regards to services moving to Lincoln and the need to travel. So I will ask, what specifically is being put in place to address those concerns from the Grantham community? What specifically were there around? And what specifically are we putting in place? Thank you.
Thank you. So as I said, it was a very small number of concerns. And it was from the general public, rather than people that are using our service, which offers me some assurance that what we're putting in place is making a difference to the people in Grantham who are using our service. So I'll talk through what it is that we're doing. So the dementia home treatment team is countywide. It offers support to people in their homes. So the majority of people in the Grantham area who require enhanced support over and above what we can offer in our community services, will now receive that support in their home environment. So there won't be a requirement for them to travel at all. Where inpatient admission is indicated, and we're seeing that in less than fifteen percent of the individuals that we see, we can offer financial support and assistance to arrange travel for families to visit. And we do that on a case by case basis. And that's not just for the families of our dementia patients. But actually, we've got processes in place across all of our mental health services where there are challenges to accessing and visiting for families and carers. We do put bespoke plans in place.
Yes, please follow if you wish.
Thank you for that. Can I just ask what assurance we have? I was speaking to somebody who's been involved working in the hospital, bridging the gap within the care from the hospital, caring for people's needs in the community. What assurance do we have? We're actually picking up all of these people who might need this level of service? What sort of assurance do you feel you've got that there aren't people out there in the community who basically aren't aware of the support you're providing, who might have dementia and other complex needs? Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a really good question, actually. What we've seen since the dementia home treatment team is we're able to support more patients. So obviously, when you're providing an inpatient services, you're limited by your number of beds. We've seen people supported by our dementia home treatment team, more people coming in. And it's taking less time to get them to a position where we can discharge back to community services. So the capacity we've got within the dementia home treatment team, we're able to use to support more individuals because they're with us for less time. And I think part of that relates to, as I touched on, we often see a period of deterioration for people if we take them out of their familiar environment and put them in an inpatient setting. And that can often mean they end up with a prolonged stay in one of our wards when that's not really what they need. They need ongoing, robust care and support. How we publicise it, I think, is a really key thing. And Jo is our comms lead, who I've brought with me today. I think now we've made a decision to move to that substantive model, there's something for us to really think about as a trust, about how we get that news out to the wider community and how we explain what the services are that are on offer and how people can access them. So I think that's a really good point. I don't think it's something, I think while we've been in pilot phase, that's not been the focus. The focus has been on trying to get feedback. But we absolutely do need to make sure that the public is aware of where they can access support. So thank you for that.
I would just add as well, because this service is kind of at the more specialist end of what we provide, what is often is they're actually the individuals that would be suitable for this service, they're already kind of connected with our community services. So they will refer into it as and when required. I think what the other broader issue you're probably picking up is the kind of the levels of phases before this and how we promote the kind of when people have had a diagnosis or how if people are experiencing symptoms, how they go through a memory assessment and things. And we're doing some work around sort of memory assessment and dementia prevention campaigns with public health at the moment, that we're just sort of trying to increase that awareness at the moment.
Thank you. Councillor Smith next, please.
Thank you Chairman. It's a lovely report this. And I fully support the home treatment service. I think it's the most excellent thing you could do in Lincolnshire. My mother suffered from dementia. And every time she went into Gainesborough Hospital or Lincoln Hospital or Scunthorpe, it always set her back. It was terrifying experience for her, being put in an ambulance. She didn't know where she was going, why she was going, why she was being dragged out of her house. So the home service support is an amazing thing. She was in a care home for eight years and she just got the tail end of the home care service in her final year in the care home. And the people that came, they were just so wonderful. And it was such a brilliant service. So I fully support the home care service deeply. Thank you very much. Thank you Chair.
Thank you.
Councillor Lee next, please.
Thank you. Thanks for a really good report. And again, in a positive sense, I would say that I would have liked a little bit more, I like to see what things look like in practice because I'm a councillor and I represent people. And I want to know what my people are going to see happening. So if we could have an email to follow up, just basically write, this is what happens. A nurse goes to someone's house X times a month. And some numbers across Lincolnshire, you know, we have X numbers of visits and this is how many in Grantham and this is how many in Lincoln. That kind of practical information. The report itself's really good. I found, my mum had dementia and she only had it for about the last fifteen months of her life. And she went into a care home. So she, and I remember her having a community nurse, but to be, I don't think it was this service. And I have to say, my experience, and my mum's been dead two years, so this is going back a few years. My experience was that dementia is a progressive and chronic thing. And it wasn't until you hit a crisis that actually any help went in. So I'd like to think that that's probably changed. Please reassure me that it has. What else have I got down here? You've said on here as well about the funding. And I can completely appreciate that. And I just wonder at the end of this, when we have a recommendation, if this committee could recommend that we feel that specific identified extra funding needs to go into this service, if that might be helpful and if others agree with me. So if you could email us that information, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think, being honest, I think the service and the funding we've got, we're able to provide what we need. I think the gaps are elsewhere in the pathway for dementia. And so it might be that as a committee, you want to consider inviting in Richard Eccles, who's leading on the dementia strategy. So he's Mental Health, Learning Disability and Dementia and Autism Commissioning Programme Manager. I'm trying to get the name right, apologies. And he's leading on the dementia strategy for the system. And it might be as a committee that actually you want to think about inviting him in to explore some of those gaps. Because I agree, I think what we're seeing, the feedback we're getting from this service is it's providing excellent care. But it is for people who have got quite complex needs associated with their dementia. And actually, we know the biggest proportion of people with dementia will be living with family members in the community with needs, but perhaps don't meet the threshold for this level of support. And so I think that's where those funding conversations might be really welcomed.
Chair, can I just say, because I forgot, I just wanted to say as well, obviously, the ten year plan talks about care in communities. So this absolutely fits, doesn't it? So thank you.
Thank you. councillor Scalazza, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'd just like to say thank you very much for the report. It's fantastic. As a qualified nurse, I've done home care and I've also worked in the clinical environment for years. I did a years' comment in dementia care. It's a very difficult job to be in. And I just would like to ask you, what support is being given to the carers in the home environment, please? Or is there any training for them? Because I know there can be some difficult times. Thank you.
Yeah. And again, I think it comes back to that broader pathway conversation because certainly part of our home treatment model is that we will be providing support and advice to carers. But obviously, people come into contact with our services at a point where often they're reaching a crisis point or feeling unable to care for their loved one in the environment that they're in. There is a broader piece of work happening with public health, isn't there, around raising awareness? But I think it is in that broader pathway, there is scope for us to do more, I think.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have councillor Morgan next and then councillor, well breathed, then councillor Mackinson Saunders, please.
Yes, thank you for coming back. This touches, actually, I'll start with this question. I've got a resident who really springs to mind now. And it's a lady who's in her late seventies, whose husband is in his mid eighties, who has a number of severe mobility, other issues, who also has dementia, living in a two up, two down house, completely unsuitable for the needs. So I'm wondering, how are they having difficulty finding alternative housing? How do all these groups work together to deliver them what they really need if we're saying he's going to keep at home to have that care at home, when home actually isn't suitable? And I have a fear this could apply to lots of people, actually.
I would agree. And I mean, what I can say is that we have really strong relationships between our clinical teams and our colleagues in social care who are responsible for housing provision. We work together where we can. We know that around the area of dementia, there are gaps in what is offered. We also know there are challenges around suitable accommodation for people, particularly when they've got mental health needs. And that's an area of work that we're focusing on across health and social care together. But in terms of the housing support, that would be more our colleagues in social care. So we would be linking in with them to raise concerns. But we would be asking for our social care colleagues to support that family and look at what could be done differently.
Is it not the district who do the housing? Because this is where I think they're being bounced back between district, occupational health, back to whatever medical support they're getting. So how would they get hold of yourselves? So this goes back to my original question. If I take, picks up councillor Lee's point really, how practically can they seek that help? What do they need to ask for, perhaps of their GP or whatever, in order to get the sort of level of help you're providing? What criteria, you said when people are in a crisis state, what are the actual criteria? What is, how crisis do you have to be? Thank you.
So for our service, which is around dementia and people's mental health, you would be talking about crisis where you're perhaps getting behaviours of concern, so violence violence and aggression towards family members, associated paranoia, it's that kind of, it's that mental health crisis. I think when it's a physical healthcare crisis, and people are deteriorating physically, that's other healthcare providers, that's not us, and this isn't me passing the buck, because we need to be working as a joined-up team, but this is where I feel like, specifically in dementia, there's more that we can do, and there's gaps that we could fill around that as a system.
Thank you. councillor Welbury, please.
Thank you, chairman. Just a question around funding, I know you said that you feel comfortable with the funding at the moment, I just wondered, how many members in the team and what level of training, and if you are going to publicise your services, do you feel that the funding then would be adequate, as it's coming from the Manthorpe ward? You know, you might be a victim of your own success, and also, regards level of training, you know, it's recruitment, the right people, you know, you're comfortable with a plan going forward for yourselves? Thank you.
I think that's a really fair challenge, thank you, and I did think, as I said it, about funding, I'm looking a gift horse in the mouth, I think I was more thinking about where we've got absolute gaps, versus in this space, we do have a service that we are able to fund. So our teams are made up of a combination of registered healthcare practitioners, and they're predominantly nurses, but we do have some occupational therapists in the team. There is access to physio where required, we have access to psychology, and we have healthcare support workers, and we offer in-house training, as well as supporting people through relevant external courses. So it's a genuinely multi-professional team, and the model has been set up to be able to provide that enhanced level of care, so it's not a standard community team, it's got the capacity to go and see someone more than once a day, if that's what's required. But also, I think what's important for me to say is, the way that we funded that and the way we manage that, is we do treat the caseload as if it was a ward caseload. So we have a finite number of people, that we will say the home treatment team will be able to treat at any one point in time, and we work really closely with our, with our teams in our inpatient wards and our community services, so that if someone's being escalated up to the home treatment team, and they need that enhanced level, we're having multi-professional conversations around how do we make the capacity in the team. So is that that actually, we need to escalate someone into an inpatient admission, or is it that actually the community team can take on the care now for somebody else, so that we can? So you're absolutely right, I'm saying that we've got the funding we need, that's for the level we've got now. I'm also really cognisant that what public health projections are telling us, is that the population in Lincolnshire is an aging population, and what we know around prevalence is that as we continue to age as a population, we are likely to see more people requiring support and living with dementia. So yeah, long-term, there's things for us to think about there.
Thank you. councillor Mackinson Saunders, please.
I often think that coming to these meetings, Lincolnshire tips slightly to the west, but that's because I must have a chip on my shoulder about services in the east, really. Could you explain what service, because we've probably got the most aging population in the whole of the county, could you explain what services are available within the east, along the coast, and within up to the walls and so forth? And I am going to, I'm sad you haven't mentioned it, because we have an Aging Better team at East, Southeast Lincolnshire Partnership, which is really successful, and they do a lot of work with dementia, but they do a lot of work with families, and it's the families that really need the support just as much as the person suffering, isn't it? So, and I would like to pay tribute to them, because it is a very good service. We also have a lady who, I don't know if you know her, she does all the bits and bobs to help out people with dementia, I can't, Bob's something or other, and she comes up, oh, it's a wonderful service, and she comes up with, she was a special needs teacher, and she's come up with all these aids for people with dementia, and if she hasn't been in touch with, Bob's Brainwaves it's called, it's a really super service, that, I don't know if you know about it, but she's been hither and thither with it, and it's exemplary, and we should all be pushing it out to our residents. But if you could tell me what goes on in the east, please, it'd be quite useful to feed back them, thank you.
Absolutely. So in terms of the dementia home treatment service, that's a county-wide service, so that will support people wherever they live in the county. There was a comment from the East Midlands Clinical Centre about, you know, doesn't that mean that your staff are doing more travelling? Absolutely, they're doing more travelling so that our patients and their families don't have to. So you know, it's that interesting dynamic. We also have dedicated older adult mental health, community mental health teams, one based at Louth, one based at Skegness, and one based at Boston, along the east coast, and they will provide the more generic support to people who might have dementia and associated mental health needs, and then they will escalate up if they require support from the home treatment team. I think that's the specific, and I've not heard of the Bobs.
Oh, well, I will, if you leave your card, oh, you've written it down?
Yeah.
I'm sure she'll be delighted to go and give you, put you through all the things, it's a really good scheme. How do people get into the scheme? Do they have to be referred by a GP, or can they self-refer?
I'm going to look at Jo, I believe we've got.
So the actual dementia home treatment team is, as I said before, is, that's because it's an escalating need, they're likely to be within our community teams already, which they'll have been either referred to as part of their memory assessment, that a GP will have referred them on to, but obviously, if somebody has had an assessment and they're not necessarily accessing those teams, then generally speaking, if they go to their GP, they will kind of signpost them into the most appropriate support, and that's kind of generally the main route in at the moment. We do have more information on our website, and there's a bit of a, kind of like a, it's like a chatbot, that helps kind of guide people into different services as they need to. But the memory assessment, I think we are starting to take self-referrals to a certain extent, but I can't actually remember myself. But I would just plug as well, we've just started a Saturday one-stop-shop clinic, and I did send details to the committee for memory assessments at the Community Diagnostic Centre at Lincoln, which is helping us kind of do all of the assessment diagnostics and kind of diagnosis all in one day, and that's kind of sort of being piloted at Lincoln as a bit of a starter, to see how that goes in terms of working with a community diagnostic clinic, so that's just as a broader dementia pathway piece of work.
And if, at your discretion, please, Mr Chairman, if people have to put their nearest and dearest into a nursing home, is there any help with the fees, if they've got advanced dementia?
I don't know the answer to that, because I think that's social care, rather than, apologies.
It's a worry to people, but, it's not part of your scheme.
Thank you for that. Do I have any others, any other questions, anyone else wishing to speak? Fine, thank you. Just one obvious question, forgive me if it shouldn't be addressed to you, but do you, can you have any clues as to the future possible use of the Manthorpe ward?
So we've not explored that in a lot of detail, I have to say, while we've been doing the pilot, because we wanted it to be a genuine pilot, and when we looked at our options, we wanted there to be a genuine option on the table of reopening Manthorpe, if that was the right thing to do. So given that the board's decision and the paper coming to yourselves, we're going to look at an options appraisal around how we might use Manthorpe. We've got some ideas as a trust around potential future uses for that, in terms of supporting some of our developments in mental health. Equally, we're having conversations with our colleagues in ULTH about their need in the Grantham area, and what, and whether they're, you know, who's needs trump who's, I guess, is the, so we're going to have those conversations pulled together in options appraisal. What I think we're very confident of, is it's a space that will absolutely be used to provide ongoing healthcare. The context of that, I think, is yet to be decided, and there's a few competing suggestions at the moment.
Thank you, it's reassuring to hear that it will remain in use for something or another, anyway, thank you very much. So if I have no further speakers, all it leaves me to do is to thank you for coming and speaking to us and answering our questions. And I need to therefore move to a proposal. I have people speaking, right, okay, councillor Scalazza, I saw you first. Can you put your microphone on, please?
Yes, I propose that we go ahead with that, yeah.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
I'll propose it for you, to go ahead, so what you want to, a second.
Sorry, I haven't formulated the proposal yet, I thought you wanted to put something into the proposal. Councillor Morgan, I'm sure you are.
I'm neither, I was actually, I have a feeling, I'll listen to what you've got to say first, it might be the best way of doing it.
So my draft proposal is that the presenters from LPFT be thanked for their presentation answering questions, and that the committee records its support for the decision to make permanent the community health treatment service with the resultant closure of the Manthorpe ward at Grantham. And that is, that is my draft. Do you wish to, anybody wish to add or take away from that proposal? Councillor Morgan?
Yeah, I think I'd just like to, if we can add, that it is reassuring to hear that although the ward is closing in Grantham, that there will be provision in place for people at home to support them as an alternative, if we could put that in.
Thank you, I think that's implicit, anyway, but yeah, that's taken on board. Sorry, councillor Welbury.
Yeah, I'd just like to add, if we can, if it's appropriate, something about funding, because the funding for this service is taken from Manthorpe ward, so if that is then, that ward is then used for something else, is the, where does the funding come from, et cetera and so forth? So can we keep that as a recommendation?
I think we take it as read that the funding is not in peril, if that's the right word, or no, I'm getting nods from, from our presenters, so I think that's taken as read that.
Any future use of Manthorpe won't be affected, won't affect the funding that goes to the dementia treatment team, it'll be a new funding decision, or a use of a different pot.
Okay, thank you.
So is everyone clear on what the proposal is? Are you all nodding right? So all those in favour, do have a second, please? Councillor Morgan, all those in favour, please show. That's unanimous, thank you very much. So we are running slightly ahead of time, we only have the work programme now on the agenda to discuss. Would anyone like a comfort break? Or would you like to carry straight on? Carry straight on? Okay. So we now move on to item eight on the agenda, which is the work programme. Simon to introduce, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, chairman. If I could ask the committee to look at pages 80 onwards of the agenda pack, which sets out the items for the November through into December and January meetings. Just picking up what, picking up this morning, there was discussion on the maternity, neonatal services item, of a future item, so if the committee is minded for something in, after a period of about six months, maybe that we could look to programme something in, to pick up some of the issues that were raised as part of that. And I think, I know I was in and out some of the time during that item, but I think there was also a suggestion during the previous item, that the committee may wish to look at the broader dementia strategy. The item, the previous item was effectively focused on the enhanced community dementia service, which is a small aspect, but I think there was a suggestion, so if the committee's minded to do that, we can look at programming that in. And obviously, there are the items listed at the end of the paper, which is on page 84, the final page of the agenda, which are also on the, if you like, the committee's to-do list. I'll stop there, chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, anyone?
Yeah.
Fast, chairman, thank you.
I'm not sure if it's the appropriate time to mention, but essentially, GP appointments, that is one of the main things that I'd like to see, in that access to appointments is the front door to the NHS, it's so important that we get that right, and everybody seems to be reporting it's going the wrong way at the moment, so we need to sort something out with that, and make sure it's going the right way. Thank you.
Thank you, chairman. We've got that item in December, I mean, the pattern of the committee has tended to be, over the last few years, that the, there's an update on GP services every six months. So I think it was at the committee's first meeting in June, in December, and I guess the committee will want to continue that pattern after the December meeting, but that's the sort of thing that, that's, you know, a reason that that item is a recurring item on the committee's work programme. Thank you.
Yep, certainly, and of course, in advance of that happening, we can ask that certain issues that we constantly come up are actually in the report before it comes to us. councillor Lee.
I'd support both of the two that we talked about this morning, but I would ask, if we're going to look at GP services in December, can we have some specific reference to the dealing with wound care, the outsourcing, so, you know, people can't go to the GPs? Because whatever response I've had, and I'm sorry, but what excuses were given, you've still got elderly people with leg ulcers, et cetera, who have to travel out, when we're told that services are coming more local, to have those, and I think it's really important that treatment for wound care is part of that in December. Thank you.
No, that's noted, yeah. Anyone else? councillor Morgan?
Well, I know we've touched on this before, but I think, this is coming up constantly, especially with the local plan work everyone's having to do, and that is how the NHS services, especially the provision of additional hospital beds, are matching the growth in the population of our county, and the new development in our county, how are they actually, are they actually planning for their growth?
Chair, if I may, I think that comes to adult scrutiny, doesn't it? Think?
Yeah, I think, so I was just looking while you were speaking, I thought we did have an item waiting to be programmed on the NHS forward planning. Thank you, I've just spotted it, thank you, yes. Yeah, so we have got an item there that's waiting to be programmed, which is NHS planning for demographic changes, which is waiting to be put in, and on a practical level, I mean, I don't think we want to have more than three substantive items on any agenda, because we're not going to fit that in within three hours reasonably, so the first date that could go in would be the first of April meeting, or May.
Chair, can we have two on an agenda?
Sorry.
Can we just have two? I think three's too much, but it's up to other people.
I think we're going to try and draw some judgement as to how long the particular items would be, I mean, we're well within time today with two, we could have squeezed three in today before one o'clock, so it's a bit of a move, it's a bit of a difficult one to judge, but if we've got things that people.
Long as it's one o'clock, not five o'clock.
Indeed, but I mean, there's a lot of issues that people want us to discuss, so, you know, it's the devil of the deep blue sea, isn't it, really? councillor Mackinson Saunders.
Do you think, I don't know, can't make this work, but never mind, somebody's got something.
Sorry.
Sorry. It can be a short one, about the, an update into the Integrated Care Board, because I'm really concerned about things moving over, and the loss of, when we had our induction, whatever month it was, April or May, or June, or whenever it was, there was, we had people from the Integrated Care Board who said how well it was working in Lincolnshire, and I find it really, really disappointing, it's going to be chopped sausage sliced yet again, and the effect it'll have on Lincolnshire is worrying.
Thank you, you did make the point at the beginning of the meeting, and I think as a, as a bare minimum, I will look for an update, including the chairman's announcement, at every meeting, because this is clearly an ongoing issue, which is going to roll out over, over a period. to roll out over, over a period, isn't it? So we'll, we will do that. If we can get them to come in at some point in the spring to do us a fuller update, would that, everybody happy with that? Yeah? We, we could, we'll see what we can do with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, thank you. Simon, you've got anything to note? You're okay? Okay, so we, we will draw up the forward, we'll put the items in based upon the conversation that we've, we've just had, if everyone's happy with that. And this concludes the meeting of the scrutiny committee in that case. Thank you very much for attending and see you next month. Thank you.